We'll call it the order, the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for December 10th, 2013. Please join us with a pledge of allegiance to salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, whose inevitable perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Welcome, everybody. Happy holidays. First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. John, is there any changes that need to come before us in the agenda?
None that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the regular meeting agenda?
Second. The motion is second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on future agendas. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, I'd ask if there's any public input on any items that are not on the agenda Seeing none, we'll move on. Minutes. Approve or disapprove minutes for the November 19th, 2013, regular meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes for November the 19th, 2013, regular meeting minutes.
And I second. The motion is second to approve the minutes for November 19th, 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. John, do you want to go through the expenditure report, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet, you have the expenditure report dated December 9th, 2013, for $1,663,450. Going through it, it's just really, we've had the payrolls and no extra extraordinary expenditures at this time for our major projects. We have completed the work out in the front, except for the paving, which they're preparing to pave those parking lot spaces right at the front of the building. That'll be Southwest is paving those, working with Earl on that. And then, we've finished the fair building, except for the new construction that will probably start after January out there. And so, we've made the, we've got one payment left to that contractor, which is the retention. We're just trying to make sure everything is cleared up with the warranties and everything on the building, then we'll send that payment. And then, we've made the last payment to the contractor on the conference center after he's repaired the warranty items, and we've paid that retention on that project, so that's completely done now. As we go forward, trying to get the money for the inside. Other than that, there's really nothing extraordinary.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the December 9th, 2013 expenditure report.
Second. The motion is second to approve the December 9th, 2013 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the cash flow analysis for fiscal year 2013? John, you want to go through this in some detail?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in your packet, you have the cash flow analysis for the month ending October 31st, 2013. We've gone through the audit that's been sent up to the State Auditor's Office, and that's what we're waiting for, to make sure of the beginning cash numbers to get this to you. So, we'll start as July 1st, 2013, our beginning cash is $2,451,424 in the general fund. As of October 31st, the year-to-date revenues are $1,791,582. Year-to-date transfers are zero. Operating expenditures year-to-date are $858,243. Salaries and benefits year-to-date are $2,053,033. Leaves a cash balance on October 31st of $1,331,729, with projected transfers in by June 30th of 2014 of $818,010. Transfers out of $2,137,252. Projected revenues of $8,740,981. Projected operating expenditures of $2,246,50. Projected salaries and benefits of $4,142,677. Leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $2,364,742, less the required reserve of $2,105,342. Leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014 of $259,400. On page two is the budgeted revenues for the general fund. Currently, we have collected 17.1% of the budgeted revenues as of October 31st, 2013. The next page is the transfers, and we have done 0% of the budgeted transfers from the general fund out to other funds. On the next page, you have the road department. As of October 31st, 2013, the actual cash balance on July 1st, 2013 was $267,657. Revenues year-to-date are $222,138. There were zero transfers done year-to-date. Operating expenditures year-to-date are $120,445. Salaries and benefits year-to-date are $406,014. Leaves a cash balance on October 31st, 2013 of a negative $36,664, with projections through June 30th of transfers in of $502,715. Revenues of $791,354. Operating expenditures of $1,358,404. Projected salaries and benefits of $237,772. Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $136,773, less the reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus of $5,838. On the next page is the corrections fund. As of October 31st, the actual cash on July 1st, 2013 is $407. Year-to-date revenues of $317,326. Transfers so far are zero. Operating expenditures year-to-date are $305,809. Salaries and benefits year-to-date are $629,130. Leaves a cash balance at October 31st of a negative $617,207, with projections through June 30th, 2013 of transfers in of $1,486,153. Revenues of $634,398. Operating expenditures of $574,088. And salaries and benefits of $896,534. Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $32,723. The reason why we are negative at October 31st on this and the road is because these departments operate off the revenues they receive, and then the general fund transfers down anything that they are short at the end of the year. And so, we don't transfer until usually mid-year. We do a transfer for half of the money, and then we do another one at June 30th. And so, they go into a negative state at about the mid-year point, and then we bring them out of that. So.
Cash flow analysis for this year?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the cash flow analysis for fiscal year 2013.
And I second. The motion is second to approve cash flow analysis for fiscal year 2013. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. Approve or disapprove inventory deletions for various departments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as part of our annual process, what we do is we send out our inventories to each of the departments, and they go through and review things that may have been or they have gotten rid of during the year. And then, we're required by the state to bring them in front of the commission. In the past, the county, and this has been many years ago, would put things on like chairs, different footrests, things that they wanted to track. But the auditors have asked us now as well, is that we don't track those in our normal capital process, we track them in a separate system. And so, that's why we're seeing a lot of the smaller items being deleted. It's based on recommendations from the auditor. We're getting out wristrests, ergonomic chairs, small printers. There are some larger laptops, a blazer. We have things as old as Palm Pilots that were in here on the inventory as we go through that are no longer either useful, they've been destroyed. And so, we are required by the state, like I said, State Auditor's Office, we bring it in front of the commission, then we send a letter up to them with this inventory asking for approval, and then we'll remove it all from our books.
Would the items that were stolen from PA Volunteer Fire, would that be something we would delete, or is that in the future?
Yeah, we will, after we finish up our insurance claim on that item, then we'll come in front of the commission and ask for those items to be deleted off of our inventory because we no longer have them. And then, we'll replace them.
So on the deal, are those going up to auction?
What we're doing on is, we're trying to work, there hasn't been a lot of auctions around the area, so Jacob's been trying to get with one. Or we've been working on possibly just putting out, what we have to do is a sealed bid process, where we set a minimum bid that has to be made, and the highest bidder wins the item after we go through and do a sealed process, and they submit them. So, he's working with Larry at the road department to decide which is the better way to go.
I requested this about seven months ago, so I'm glad it's finally getting done.
Yeah, no, they're working on it.
Are the cars from the senior center included on this?
Some of the cars from the senior center, what has happened is they were still useful, and so they've gone to other departments, and we've brought them in front of the commission for transfers.
That was my question.
We've transferred, if it's a useful piece of equipment, what we do is we transfer, and those have actually come in front of you at an earlier meeting. DWI has got a couple, I think. Public Works received one.
Is that car that they stole the tires from?
I don't know if that one is down at the road department, or if it was there, because all it needed was tires, and it was still a good car. So, I'm not sure what they did with that one. I think we've deleted it or transferred it, because we brought all the senior vehicles in front of. One thing we've also done is, we did it a couple of minutes ago, is the ambulances. We transferred them off of our books onto the hospital's books, and so all those ambulances, we've signed those titles, and they're on their books now. And so, we no longer have the ambulances. So, but that's what we try and do, is if a department can use it, we transfer it to that department, otherwise, we scrap it. Usually, sheriff's department vehicles have 400,000 to 500,000 miles on them when they get sent down to the road department.
Transfer.
No, usually people don't want them. But it's surprising how many requests the sheriff gets as soon as he gets a new vehicle over there. Everybody thinks what he's getting rid of is just the greatest thing that they've got to have it.
They ought to sell it right then.
Well, it's another department. It's our departments come in, and they start asking, yeah, they start asking for them, and...
They just want those red lighters.
Yeah. And they're usually junk by the time, because the county is so large, the sheriff's office puts so many miles on them.
Oh, they definitely do.
And they're spread out, but they're usually not worth, I mean, we get $200 at auction for them, I think for the steel.
Grab for you further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the inventory deletion for the various departments?
Second. The motion is proper second to approve inventory deletions for the various departments. All those, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove a proclamation for 2013, 2014, Southwest New Mexico Chamber, Grant County, Think Local, Buy Local?
Local?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this was brought to us by the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce, and...
Sissy is here.
Yeah.
That's why it wouldn't come out as well.
Yeah. And Sissy brought it, this is a campaign they've done for a few years now. They're trying to get people to buy from local vendors at the time of the holidays, instead of sending their money out of town. Helps the economy. They've got a proclamation. I can read it for you.
If you wish.
Would you rather read it, or would you like to have it in your hands?
You can go right ahead if you've got your mic ready and excited to. She knows she's up.
Whereas, the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce is focused on supporting the success and strength for our local community, economy, and encouraging the efforts of our local independent business owners. And whereas, the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce was officially organized in January 2010, in the stated purpose of supporting the triple bottom line economic development for socially and environmentally responsible business practices, such that they positively impact our community. And whereas, what and where you buy matters, encouraging local buying has proven to positively impact communities on multiple levels, including keeping local communities unique, improving the environment by reducing transportation, keeping more money local, as on average, 31% more money stays local, promoting stronger local economies with competition and diversity, reducing costs to their town as local businesses cost communities less in infrastructure, supporting community needs as local businesses are invested in the community. Local businesses give more money back to their communities and nonprofit causes, and buying local helps spur entrepreneurs and angel investors to grow and set up, startups, excuse me, small businesses. And whereas, the Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce has launched the Tell Us Your Favorite Buy Local Story contest to encourage consumers to shop local and share their positive experiences during the month of December. Now therefore, I Brett Caston, by virtue of authority vested in me as chairman of the Grant County, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2013 through December 31st, 2013, as Think Local, Buy Local, and Invest Local Month, and urge all citizens to support our independent and locally owned businesses. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official sale of the County of Grant to be affixed this 10th day of December, 2013.
We'll probably do a few word changes in that before we give you the official one, because I don't declare anything by myself. I have two very distinguished gentlemen sitting here with me that make sure that we all do it together. But I think with those changes, if you guys don't mind, we should probably get a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation, 2013, 2014, Southwest New Mexico Chamber, Grant County, Think Local, Buy Local.
I second that motion with the changes.
Okay. The motion is second to change the, or to pass the proclamation as amended. Is there any discussion on that motion? Yes, John?
I just wanted to make clear the amendment that we're going to make is that now therefore, we'll say now therefore, the Board of Grant County Commissioners do hereby proclaim December 10th.
Yes.
And that's all we're going to change.
That's right. That's okay with you guys, right?
All right. I'll just strike out I Brett Caston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the chairman of Grant County.
That strikes me out. Okay, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You guys want to come up and say something? Even though, get a picture if you don't mind.
Can I be great?
All right. Yeah, something?
Well, I just want to mention that we did have Small Business Saturday, and that went very, very well on the 30th of November. And this is really a continuation of that. We've had, we've been out visiting small businesses. We have a logo that you'll see all around town, around Grant County, that says Think Local, Buy Local, Grant County. And the businesses are really excited about it. And the stories that we've heard in the past are great, and it's talking about building relationships with business owners, and people finding what great resources we have locally. So, we're really thrilled about this. We'll be continuing it through the month of December, and then we're actually going to have a monthly contest all through 2014. So, we're going to keep this momentum going. We think it's really going to be helpful, and we continue to work with small businesses and entrepreneurs to grow and keep more gross receipts taxes right here at home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go get a picture. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove New Mexico Department of Health EMS Fund Act application for the Gila Valley EMS.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, September of the year where they will be submitting their, all the EMS departments. This is the first one we've received. There will be several others to come. They're due by Friday, January 24th, so we'll probably have the others on the next meeting in January. Gila Valley's application is for $19,800. They're wishing to have $6,500 for training, $8,000 for mileage, $2,200 for supplies, and $3,100 for capital outlay. They consider, the EMS Fund Act considers anything over $500 a capital outlay item, which is uniforms and radios. What these applications do is they go up to the state for that Fund Act money. If they're approved, they come back down. It's no cost to the county, doesn't come out of our general fund, because the EMS departments are under us, we're a fiscal agent for them. We also are fiscal agent for the Fund Act money for the Gila Regional EMS Department when they apply for their Fund Act money as well, because it can't go directly to the hospital, it has to come through Grant County. So, we are the fiscal for theirs. So, we should see an application from them on the next meeting in January, but it's January 9th will be our meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the New Mexico Department of Health EMS Fund Act application for the Gila Valley EMS.
Second that. The motion is second to approve the New Mexico Department of Health EMS Fund Act application for the Gila Valley EMS. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye, please.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove an appointment of one member to the Gila Regional Board of Trustees. John, you want to go over that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you know, we have a position that's expiring at the end of this year. It's the position that Charles Kelly currently holds. This will be not a full three-year term on this position, because this is the last position we needed to do to get them all in alignment with the statute of being expiring on a June timeframe. So, this new term will be from January 2014 to June 30th, 2016. So, we have had five individuals put in, you've got your letters in your packet. You have Mr. Charles Kelly, who currently holds that position, is wishing to be reappointed to the position. You have Mr. Gary Staley, Mr. Edwin Wilmot, Mr. William Charlin, and Mr. Steve May. Have all applied, and you have, and so we have to choose one of those individuals so that the board will be at its full standing, which is two doctors and I believe five non-doctors.
Just to get started, this is a welcome change, we have to have such a nice group of applications here. So at this time, I would take a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint to the Gila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, Charles L. Kelly.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Mr. Charles L. Kelly to a two-and-a-half-year term, expiring 6/30/16, to the GRMC Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes, sir. I just, I welcome all the people that did put in. It looks like we had some very well-qualified individuals that put in for this position. Although the circumstances that we're in right now, I think since we have a gentleman on this list with experience, and been currently experiencing the problems that we've been going through, I feel we need to keep him in there to continue working and bettering the institution.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to just like to thank the gentleman who stepped out and put their name forward and such, and nothing against them. Mr. Kelly has the, I think, the experience and expertise to do an excellent job, and so I think it's a good choice, but I do want to thank those individuals who stepped forward.
Any further discussion?
Just welcome him to put in again in the near future.
Yes, please do.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the resolution R-1375? This is budget adjustments. John, you want to go over those adjustments, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is something we discussed during our budgeting process. These are grants that we get throughout the year that we're not sure of, that we are going to receive, and what the values are going to be, so they're not included in our original budget, so we have to do budget adjustments when they do come in. And so, what this would be is setting up, we've done an adjustment in the sheriff's department's budget. Originally, the original budget we gave you had his overtime salaries at $135,000, which included some monies that he has for the forest patrols through the Forest Service. What he told us is he would like to have those separated out, because they allow him not only to spend them for overtime, but also to purchase some equipment that he uses for that. And so, that's what that first budget adjustment does. It doesn't change the budget, it just separates those monies out into a new line item in his budget, so that he can track his expenditures through that easier, and he doesn't use it all for overtime. The next ones are setting up the airport development plan, the airport construction Phase III grant, the job access grant, operation buckle-down grant, the 100 days and nights of summer, the restorative justice grant, and the three Cory Caminos grants that we received, that that's on the federal, all of these things are usually on a federal fiscal year, that we don't receive them until after October 1st. We've got the DWI Community Program, the Hurley Wastewater System, and then Road Special Projects. So that's what this does, it sets up the revenues for those monies coming in, and it also sets up the expenditure line items, so that we can expend those. And once again, these are grants that, at our timeline, when we do our budget in July, June and July, we do not have them yet. We don't receive them until closer to September, October timeframes, and so we come to the commission later and do budget adjustments as required by the state.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman. Any questions for John?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution number R-1375.
Second. A motion proper second to approve resolution R-1375. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'd ask for a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Called order, the Grant County Indigent and Health Plan Claims Board at this time. Item aye on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the indigent fund for November 30th, 2013. Not many more of these to do, is there?
No, just probably one more. It all depends, I guess. In your packets, you have the indigents from, claims from November 30th, 2013. The total claims are 761,000, or 761 claims, not thousand claims, 761 claims totaling Of those claims, 756 claims totaling $571,418.3 are part of the sole community provider piece. Five claims totaling $4,756.42 are the indigent claims. As the process goes forward, as the chairman was hinting to, we've had... As the process goes forward, as the chairman was hinting to, we've had some conference calls. Human Services Department has put out a spreadsheet that shows what they think would be the reimbursements to the hospitals, based on, I guess educated guesses is really all it is, past history and guesses they have, that if they were to take the 1/8 gross receipts tax away from all the counties and give that, it would be intercepted and given directly to Human Services Department, which in turn would give it to the managed care organizations, which there are four of them currently. They're the major health providers. Well, I guess there was four, because Loveless was bought by Blue Cross, so we don't know if somebody's replacing them, right? So there were four. Loveless has been bought by Blue Cross, so that's dropped it to three. I don't know if they'll replace them. The one concern that we brought up on a conference call is, Human Services Department has mentioned that they have no control over the managed care organizations. And so what it sounds like is, they'll give the money over to them, the managed care organizations will take an administrative fee out of the money, and then they decide how it's distributed. So they're saying that if we send up the $600,000 we get for our 8th, Gila Regional Medical Center should get close to $2 million back on it, so it's a benefit. But there's no guarantee, because they could send a bill to the managed care, and the managed care could deny the claim from Gila Regional Medical Center. There could be issues that Brian has spoke about it as he took over as CEO, as the interim, and now as CEO, that he's really been looking at the revenue streams, and they found a lot of things where you're losing money from coding errors, you're losing money from not billing on a timely fashion. These are all ways you can lose money, and there's no guarantee you can get that money back, is a concern. So I don't know if there'll be contracts that say that. Human Services Department meets in front of LFC tomorrow to talk about their budget, so I'll be there at that meeting. I'm planning on going up today after these meetings, leaving to go up and be in that meeting at the LFC to see what they're saying. And we're just trying to make sure that we keep the hospitals throughout the state whole. I think they're close to 30, it's a little over $30 million if they take the 1/8s from all the different counties. Bernaleo said they would not participate, because they are so large, that they'll probably stay on their own and just do their money to U and M.
Teaching us.
Yeah. So they're going to be out of the pool. It's just, there's a lot of unknowns. So right now, we know that through December, the hospital has one more quarterly payment that comes in December, and then after that, we don't know.
So John, I'm glad you're going to be up there, because we need to track this very closely. This is the current scary times right now, transitions and such.
We've had several meetings on this item in the last couple of months.
Yeah, and the chairman has been involved through, the New Mexico Association of Counties is really trying to take a lead to fight either for or against the 1/8. They're trying to find out from the counties, what do they feel? You know, do they feel like it's beneficial? Because there's some counties that the 1/8 they receive is larger than the amount of money their hospitals would get back. And so they would be on the losing end, so it'd be better for them to go against it, because then they could just give their 1/8 gross receipts tax directly to those hospitals, and the hospitals would get more money than if they sent it up.
Just like in everything else, there's winners and losers.
Yeah.
And the losers are fighting to go one way, and the winners are fighting to go the other way.
It's been interesting January meetings.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, well, and there's, one thing I brought up to Senator Morales was in one of our meetings, and currently, every time we have a gross receipts tax, the state takes an administrative fee off of it. And then HSD, or the managed care organizations are going to take an administrative fee. So if they're going to change the law to take this 1/8 and give it straight over, then they need to remove that administrative fee from the state of New Mexico, so as much money as possible is going in to go back to these hospitals, instead of us taking two or three administrative fees out of it, and by the time we get it, we get half the money.
I'm sure taxidermy will be all for that.
I'm sure they will. That will stop it. Well, then the losers will win. I mean, you'll keep your 1/8. But everybody's getting an administrative fee before it goes to the people it's intended for, and it's being paid for by the residents of Grant County, our 1/8, or anybody that buys things here, visitors and residents, and we want as much of it to come back to Gila Regional Medical Center as possible.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve the indigent fund for November 30th, 2013?
Sheriff, I'd make a motion to approve the indigent fund of November 30th, 2013.
My second?
There's a motion and a second to approve the indigent fund for November 30th, 2013. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board?
Second?
All those in favor, sign five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners, and we'll stand for county reports. Brian, I'm going to start with the other electeds today, because I've got a couple of them that need to get out of here, and then we'll let you go after them, if that's all right. Okay, Sheriff?
This is my major, 10:35, we're preparing for this holiday that's coming up, getting things situated in regards to the activity that happens during the holidays. I just want to encourage the public to be observant of their surroundings when they're doing their shopping, putting items in their vehicles, taking them home and unloading them and taking them in. Just be observant of who's watching you. There's people that obviously like to look after people that are buying expensive stuff, so I just encourage the public to report anything that's suspicious, if they see anybody suspicious around the area. Also, we've been having reports of scam going around. If anybody receives a phone call from somebody saying they want a prize, they want a car, money, whatever, and they ask you for personal information, or to send some money, so they can, so they can send you the prize, it's more likely a scam, so we encourage them not to do anything with it, just ignore the call, and let us know, and we'll look into it. Other than that, it's been fairly quiet, and I'd like to thank my staff for keeping up with the good work that they're doing, and if you have any questions, that's all I have to report.
Any questions for Sheriff?
Sheriff, do you still recommend that when you make your purchases, particularly this time of year, to place them in the trunk of the vehicle, except for the SUVs you can't? Because then people walk by and see what you have, and throw out of sight, out of mind.
After anything you buy, you tend to put it away and hide it. And if you have an SUV, using a blanket or something to cover that item will be very helpful to protecting your items.
The other thing I saw this weekend was, there was an individual walking through the parking lots with small items in his hand, trying to sell them. We want to try to believe those are his, but more likely they were shoplifted, and he's selling them. So be careful of that. Don't participate. We want to buy local.
I'm glad you brought this up, because I got scammed yesterday. And I tried to get as much information as I could, so I really need to get together with you on that. I got called saying that I was an instant million-dollar winner, and of course, of course, of course, it was like, wow. Well, I just went through the process, just to see what, how far things would get, and they went as far as saying that I want some from the MGM Grand. They gave me another 1-800 number to call, so I went ahead and called it, just to see, you know, what to, what would happen next. Then they called me back and said, did you verify that you were the winner through that 1-800 number? So I said yes, and then they said, how close is the closest Walmart to you? And I said, well, within five minutes. And they also wanted me to go get a gift card. And that's when I said, okay, this is the catch, okay, this is what these guys are doing. Well, he wanted me to get a gift card and load it with $499, and send them the, you know, the information, so that they could take the money off that card. But I was waiting for this meeting, so we can get together and you can start investigating.
You went to Walmart, or Walmart bought?
Oh, yeah, I went straight to Walmart and bought the card, but, no, of course not. But yeah, of course, it's easy for people to get scammed on this, though. I was particularly thinking of our elderly people here, and that's why I went through the whole process, just to see what was going to end up with there at the end. I knew they could be asking for personal information, and, but that's how far we went.
Sheriff, would it be prudent to contact Walmart and tell them that this actually happened, and to watch for people loading cards with that type of number?
I think that's something we will follow up on, but that is exactly what is happening. They are requesting either a gift card or a money order of stuff, and send it in, and then allegedly they'll send you a prize, and that in itself is the tell that it's a scam. But we'll pass that on.
They didn't win the million dollars. All right.
You're not.
Thanks, Sheriff, very much. Adam Sessler, do you have anything today? No report? Mr. Clerk?
I'm back up. The other day, I had a call from a fifth aid truck in the Cliff Hill area, and she had some very complicated questions, and I talked to our assessor, John, and I did originally, and I'll tell you what, you talk about handling a case, she went above and beyond what needed to be, and got information and stuff, and so I just want to thank you. Great job, you're doing a great job. Thank you. And the citizen, I think, liked it too. I know she did.
Okay. Nothing, Mr. Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham, if you want to come up and give us a report on the hospital, we'd appreciate it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Just have a brief report for you today. We're in between board meetings, excuse me, in between board meetings, so most of the data I have is from my last report. But I wanted to just update you, one item of interest is, we've been talking about having some early preliminary discussions with a physician who is dual-boarded in anesthesiology and pain management, and we're moving forward with, we've done a full pro forma, we're moving forward negotiations for him to develop a pain management program, an interventional pain management program at Gila Regional. This will be, is a great benefit to our community, and we hope to bring that contract forward to our board in the January meeting, and then move forward with building the program, probably the next couple of months after that. So I'll be updating you about that. I want you to know, we're about 120 days into our transition, and we're about 90% complete with all of the transition foundational structures that we had to implement, to set the structure for our turnaround, so that's going well. And so now it's just, we've put the plan in place, now it's worked the plan. We're beginning to see preliminary results, as I've been sharing with you. We've had three months in a row of a positive bottom line. For the accountants in the room on the cash side, we've still been drawing down our cash, but that has slowed, and at the end of, we're about to close out November, so we still only have October numbers. We're at 98 days of cash, but the drawdown has slowed, so once we have both those sides working for us, we'll be in good shape. One of the keys is, Mr. Sorry mentioned, the coding issues that we've been dealing with. We have, that number, as of a couple of weeks ago, was at about $20 million in unbilled claims. It's down to presently about $15 million, and so that's, we're going to continue to drive that number down to where it should be, which is around $3 to $5 million. And so that money will go back into our revenue cycle, the percentage of it will hit our bottom line. So things are going in the right direction. There's still a ton of work to do, and it's daily vigilance on all of the structures that we're putting in place, but we're moving well, well along. Our focus right now is on some of the issues that we share with the county, and that is preparing for the legislative session coming up, dealing with issues like the sole community provider, this whole intercept issue, and, you know, obviously, you guys are right on top of that. We're all on the same page with that. We will be at the session advocating. Susie Trujillo will be our point person for our efforts, and we're obviously really invested in the outcome of that situation, as are you. That's all I have for my report today, and I stand for questions.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to bring up with the data cash, the one thing is, with the third, this last sole community provider piece, the hospital has no match on it, and so that'll be a big jump in the days of cash, because that'll be full payment in with nothing going out to match. And so they should see a large jump in their days in cash, because that'll be a big hit, over a million-dollar payment into the hospital.
Yeah, I think that's going to be closer to around three, Mr. Sorry, so that'll jump us up about 10 to 15 days of cash, and we'll be hovering up, you know, above 100. And that's, I think that's probably our new set point for quite a while, until we get through this next half of the calendar year and see what happens with the insurance exchanges and the Medicaid expansion. That's the big unknown coming. I'm not clear yet how many people have signed up for the exchanges and Medicaid expansion, so this is the big unknown. We'll know a lot more in the next, you know, six, three to six months.
Mr. Cunningham is now no longer an interim CEO, he is actually the CEO of the hospital, so that's changed since the last commission meeting.
Congratulations.
Much appreciated. Appreciate your support, and I couldn't be happier to serve our organization and our community.
You know where we are. You ever need to get with us, so, and we appreciate you coming and having reports. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just thanks for the openness, and thanks for receiving me at your office the other day, too. And I look forward to continuing doing this.
Appreciate the board. They've been forthcoming, and they're always available and stuff, it really helps, and I use them as a, as a board to get information, you know, so, it's great.
Much appreciated. Happy holidays.
Transparency. Same here.
Okay. John? Earl said he didn't want to talk today.
Yeah, you and the commissioners, the, I guess, giving you an update on the projects, the main projects that we have going on. I have shown you, and I'll be meeting with Commissioner Hall after this meeting, the drawings that we've got for doing some improvements out at the fairgrounds, onto the exhibit building, adding, we're looking at adding some restrooms, a small office space that can be used as a substation for the sheriff and the state police, a storage, and a commercial kitchen that can be used, so it makes the, we have a 10,000-square-foot building out there, that's the exhibit building, it'll make it more usable throughout the year for people having those things in there. So we'll hopefully be renting it more and getting more use out of those facilities, instead of just mainly during the fair time. So we'll be finishing up on that. We're probably not going to go out to bid until after the January timeframe. In January, when we go up for legislative session, the New Mexico Finance Authority is supposed to meet either the 23rd or 24th of January, and so we'll be up there for that. What we've got with them is, we've got, the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Station is trying to build a new substation, or a main station actually, out in, across the street from the Hanover outpost. We've got some land that we're working on there. Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department has been working on doing some improvements to the building at the Tyrone Townsite, to the fire station there, and expanding it, because they need to add some training rooms and restroom facilities to it, to continue to be a main station and keep their funding, and so that may be in front of New Mexico Finance Authority as well, to get that going. So we've got a couple of fire stations we're working on right there. Mr. Robinson, our architect, will be up there with me to attend those meetings, possibly. We also are closing up the planning grant that we had for the waterline extension from the old Fort Baird Medical Center to the new Fort Baird Medical Center. We did a planning, we are not doing any construction or anything on that. We're just going to turn our preliminary engineering report over to the state of New Mexico. So those are kind of some of the projects that are coming up, if we get everything put together for those, for that meeting. They meet once a month. If it's not in that meeting, it'll be in February. We're just waiting from items from other people to go forward with those things. And we'll come in front of the commission with resolutions to proceed forward with those loans. When we get to that point, we may have something on the January 9th meeting. I intend on talking to New Mexico Finance Authority in the next couple of days and see how they want us to do it. The session starts January 21st, we've talked about it. It's going to be interesting. It's going to be, it's going to be, I think we'll get the first weekend off, but I don't know about any weekends after that, because it's 30-day session, it's going to be very fast-paced, a lot of information going around, a lot of issues that are out there we've been dealing with. The hospital is the big one, that we'll be really vigilant on, making sure that the hospitals throughout the state continue to get this money, because it means $150 million coming into the state of New Mexico from federal monies, that we don't want to lose that money coming in, plus the monies that are being paid by the taxpayers through local gross receipts tax. So we want to make sure that all
So we wanna make sure that all goes back, so we'll be fighting for that. Just thanking everybody, the staff did a great year. We get to the end of this year and everybody throughout the county has done a great job, no matter what department they're in. All these employees are doing two and three jobs and doing a good job at it. And so it's really, I appreciate all the work the employees do, wish we could do something for them, but unfortunately, the constitution of the state of New Mexico, I can't, it's anti-donation for the county to do anything for the employees to thank them. So our employees don't get any types of bonuses or anything, they just, just continue to work and do a great job at it, no matter what department they're at. And so I'd just like to thank them because that's what we can give them and we appreciate them. Also, we've changed insurances, so if you haven't turned in your information to the employees, we gotta get those people in, but we've migrated, starting January 1, all of our employees will be over to Presbyterian, we'll be working with a local broker, Mr. Rydeski, which will keep some of our money here local and not be sending it up to state risk management. And it was really good meetings that they had, really informative, they answered all the questions of the staff, I think, and we'll be able to use all the doctors we're using now. I think there's two dentists in town that are not on the dental plan, but he's gonna work with them.
I spoke to Rydeski yesterday and he says since most people chose the HMO, he's been able to save another $20,000 for the county, so that's, that's definitely a move in the right direction.
Yeah, the HMO was a cheaper, and most people are. It seems like it's a better, it's a better plan that fits our employees, so a lot of them have taken it, and so we're really looking forward to it. It actually is gonna save us a little more than we actually figured that money, and the state has sent us that they were going to increase our rates another 15% July 1, which now we're not going to have, will be locked in for a full year. And so we'll see a little bit more of a savings to the county, which is beneficial. It helps us continue all the services we do for the residents of Grant County. So those are the major items.
Thank you very much. John, I think we're gonna have a report in January from the Nature Conservancy and the Forest Products Company?
Yes. We, yeah, there's a presentation that was put on by Nature Conservancy and New Mexico Forest Industry at the Association of Counties. The chairman, as part of that board, was able to be part of the present, see the presentation. We've contacted those individuals and they have confirmed with us that they will come down on January 7th at our work session because they cannot make it on the 9th. And so they'll be here for the work session, and so they expect to be here close to 10, so what we'll do is start our work session as normal and whenever they get here, we can work into their presentation, is what I've told them. But it's a presentation where these two groups that normally are on other sides of the tables have come to the same side and decided that we really need to do something instead of just watching it burn and losing all the money from it burning, plus lose all the money that we lose from paying to fight the fires while they're, while they're burning out there. And so it's a very good presentation that they'll come and put on. We are going to send invitations, now that they've confirmed, to Catron County, Hidalgo County, and Luna County Commissioners. If they wish to attend, come and attend that presentation, they're more than welcome to. They'll do their own advertising, we're just gonna advertise for our commissioners, but I think it'll be a very good presentation to see, and they, they're excited to come. Talking with both of them, I think it's really gonna be enlightening.
We wanna make sure that Echo Watershed group is planning group.
Exactly. I mean, I'm glad to see that a lot of our actions are creating reactions, and I know as the Southwest County Commission, we have been writing letters to our forester and also talking to some of the resistive groups on thinning. And so hopefully, you know, some of our actions create some reactions and continue moving in the right direction. Our first Echo Watershed group meeting, which consists of the people we just appointed, met a week and a half ago, and it was a very positive meeting. I think that a lot of people in this group were really surprised that we really think alike, and I think that's gonna help us move in the right direction to try and push these type of issues such as thinning, proper vegetation to create a better water source for not only our animals, but for our people here in Grant County. And so I'm really thinking that our actions are creating some good reactions and hopefully that continues to work. I also wanted to ask you, John, to please talk with Randy, make sure that that cliff route on Trucote Caminos is really being looked at. I told him, I gave him the information from Mr. Huff that had been passed, passed on to me by Commissioner Hall, so.
We'll be meeting with him in just a little bit.
Okay, great, great.
And that's on the Transit Authority, I guess that's what it's called, the Transit Authority? Is that what the group is called on the JPA?
No. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The Transit Authority, which is over Cory, which is an advisory group to Cory Caminos, will actually be meeting December 18th, and I've asked for that to be an item on their agenda, and so it should be on the agenda for discussion of that board and see if we can go forward doing something out there.
And we appreciate your support on that overall. Commissioner?
We'll get to work and see how feasible and hopefully we can work something out.
Got anything else?
That's all I've got. Nothing, real quick. We had great representation from both our high schools in the football championships and playoffs, and congratulations to the Silver High Fighting Colts that took runner-up, state runner-ups in 3A. I know, I was disappointed that they didn't win at all, but boy, did they represent us well. And congratulations to them, congratulations to Cobra for the best year they've had in many. So, you know, congratulations to both groups.
Absolutely. Commissioner?
Well, I'll just echo about our youth, they're doing well, not only just the athletes, but all around, we're proud of them. The, on the exhibit building, I'm really excited about this. This is something that started out pulling weeds out there to get it done and stuff, and we're really excited that we're gonna, you know, it's, it's not only that we're putting a kitchen and bathrooms, storage and a substation, but we're taking a building that, in my opinion, wasn't being utilized to its fullest in that area, and we're gonna be using it, the community is. And so I'm really excited about that, and they are. The other thing that continues, and I brought it up several times, is the program analysis that we're doing now on the continuum of care. And I wanna thank the hospital for helping us there. They have been great. We've had about, I guess, seven or eight meetings so far. We'll have another one Thursday. And what we're doing, we're breaking down what we have and what we're gonna do and what we wanna do and such, and so we know whenever we do go ask for some money or whatever, then it's, it's gonna be all put together and we're gonna be serving the public better. Other than that, I just wanna thank the staff, outstanding job, you know? I remember working for the city, we used to say, you know, we used to get that a girl and that a boy, and you go down to the store, it's hard to buy an extra loaf of bread with that, but at least it makes you feel better, and you guys really do an outstanding job. And lastly, Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, you know, it's a time of year where we're putting up Christmas trees and we have lights and we have a lot of fires. So I hope everybody's very vigilant and taking care of their electrical work that goes to their trees and all their other lights, and, because I'd like to see a season without fires. Losing your home on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day is, well, it's devastating any time, it's only worse then, so please be vigilant on that. And I had an opportunity to do something really fun. It was last night, I got to go to the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department's little annual get-together for the holidays, and I was asked to give away the award for the firefighter of the year for Tyrone Fire Department and EMS member of the year. So I was just gonna announce those people. I got to see the criteria and I told them, I said, the criteria was pretty tough. You go through this, the things you had to do to even be considered, and then they voted within themselves. So this is a pure given award, which makes it even better. But the firefighter of the year was Roger Grove, and we all know Roger from being around here. And the EMS member of the year was Don Holliday, and we know Don always is, works very hard at making sure that everything is right. So with that being said, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and be careful. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some more?
Second. All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Motion passes.